Thank you. Thank you very much for putting this together. My name is Adam Zankia. I have the pleasure of representing the 55th District in the Michigan House of Representatives. And I'm going to be very brief, just because obviously you're here for a very important discussion tonight. And I got into politics because I was frustrated with inequity in education. It was the reason I first ran for office for the legislature. It's something that plagues our communities today and all across the state. And I learned in working on public policy when I thought something was essentially done with our work in landscaping, even if I was really excited about the work we had done and I felt that we had made a strong impact and we collaborated with folks in the educational field, that that was all a moot point if you didn't have good implementation at the local level of any of those policies. And so you can pass the greatest law that there is, and if you don't have people who are great and experienced and participating and listening in the community and then making those decisions on the board, none of that matters. And so the importance of local scores is something that I've come to truly, really value in the educational policy discussion. So that's why I wanted to be here tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to kind of kick things off into what I'm certain will be a very robust and educational discussion for all of us. And so I'm going to kick it over to Justin. I'm particularly excited that a YCS grad is the moderator for this evening, because I have found that when you listen to kids, they'll generally steer you in a pretty good direction. And so having somebody who just so recently participated in the educational process moderating, I think is something we all should be thankful for. So let's have Justin kick it off and compliment her on his moderation this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you for being here tonight. These questions have been collected from the community. Each person will have up to two minutes to answer each question. To start the evening, each person has three minutes to introduce him or herself, please include personal experience and involvement with the public schools that qualifies you for this elected position.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Lee. I'm a mother of four and a grandmother of two. I don't have a degree in early childhood development or anything like that, but I have raised four kids. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start over. Okay. I was saying, my name is Sharon Lee. I'm a mother of four and a grandmother of two. I don't have a degree in early childhood development, but I have raised four kids and I am helping raise my two grandkids. So that should qualify me for...
A degree in something, right?
Right. So I'm proud to say that each of my kids has went on to higher education. And I have worked at, in the Ypsilanti District at Jefferson Head Start as the secretary there. I have been in the classroom. I have been on the bus as a bus aide. I have been on the PTSD SO. And I have been a board member for Ypsilanti Community School for two years now. So I'm running for reelection for Ypsilanti Community School Board. My goal for that six-year term is to reverse the unexcused absence trend that we are having and work with our families to eliminate the barriers to prevent this from happening. I also want to slow the school-to-prison pipeline by reducing the suspension rate. And that's about it.
My name is Steve Gray, and I'm an over-20-year resident of the east side of the county. I have a wife of 31 years who's a medical social worker at the U of M Hospital and two children. My youngest just graduated from Washington International High School and is now in Southern California, not writing his parents, starting school there. So I have a background in law, so I graduated from the University of Illinois Law School in 1987 and have been a legal aid lawyer ever since I graduated from law school. So advocating, providing free legal assistance and representation on behalf of the force of the court in our community. In 2014, I joined the faculty at the University of Michigan Law School, and I'm a clinical professor there, where I work with students to get practical experience and represent people that get denied unemployment benefits. I was born and raised in Flint, and my wife's from Adrian and I'm from Flint, and so we ended up moving back to Ypsilanti in 1992 to be close to both sides of my family. I am a firm believer in public education, and I feel like that public education in general and our school district in particular is under assault. My school's a choice, and I really want to do everything that I can to make it stronger and keep it safe and sound.
Hello, can you hear me? This is on, very good. My name is Mary Schindler, and I'm currently on the Ypsilanti School Board and running for reelection with Sharon Lee. My background is that I've lived in Ypsilanti since the year 2000. I have two sons and two stepdaughters, all of whom went to Ypsilanti Schools. The boys, my older son graduated from the last graduate of Ypsilanti Public Schools in 2013, and he is a college, he's a senior in college in Chicago. And he wants to do something very similar, actually, as a lawyer, work with the Southern Liberty Law Center, in large part because of the funding inequities that he saw in the district. He wrote a number of papers his first year of college and also when he was trying to get into college about what he saw in his school district, where there was no paper, where people couldn't make photocopies, where there were no textbooks, where a teacher didn't show up for class. And so that really changed him as a person. And my younger son is a senior this year at Ypsilanti High School in the AC Tech Program, and he's having a great, it's really great. I had school time in the district for a year for his sophomore year, but we put him out as choice for junior year, and he's just getting his sophomore year. And he has had wonderful opportunities through school, so very happy with that. The girls had a different path, but they were involved in the Ypsilanti Band for a long time, and it was a great experience for them. My background is that I have, I was trained as a scientist, I was trained as a microbiologist, and never meant to be an educator, but it happened anyway. And so I taught science at a private school for a long time, and now I'm the director of that school. And I think that that helps me on the school board, because private schools have to compete directly for dollars. And it's not the same setup as a public school, but some things that I think that I learned from, continue to learn from being the director of a private school, I think in terms of communication, in terms of marketing, in terms of just general things that you learn along the way, I think can really help. And so I really want to make sure that we help increase student achievement, and as Sharon said, the school-to-prison pipeline is a particular concern. So I can see the cards going down.
Hello, my name's Mark Wildy. I've been a Well-1 resident for, well, since 1986. I was born in the Garden City area, grew up in Ann Arbor. I currently work at ProvideNet as the DSL Support Supervisor. I have three children that all went through the Well-1 Schools. Paulane, my oldest, graduated from U of M Dearborn. Alan, my son, graduated from Eastern Michigan. And Leanne, my youngest, is currently attending University of Toledo. I was on the Well-1 School Board for 10 years, leading up to the merger. During that time, I was on the board and then off the board for two years and back on. While on the board, I learned a lot about being on the school board, learned about what it takes to help the kids, about being there for all the kids, not just, you know, some special interests, although I've seen Mayor going to have a question of marginalized kids, so don't take that against that, but you do have to look at what's best for all the kids. I'm a strong proponent of the vocational education, and I'd like to see that come out in more availability than just an all-magnetic shop. I'm a mentor for the robotics teams, and we've been doing very well the last couple of years, made it to World Competitions down in St. Louis. I'd like to see more involvement for all the kids through that STEM project that is the robotics team. That's it.
Nice to meet you all. Excuse me. I would like to thank you all for coming tonight. My question would have to be, the first question would have to be, what is the role of the school board and what would you bring to the board if elected?
Sure. Can you repeat that, please?
What is the role of the school board and what would you bring to the board if elected?
Okay. The role of the school board is to...
Microphone?
Thank you.
You guys jump, sorry.
It's okay. The role of the school board is to remake decisions on policy and procedures, rehire and fire the superintendent. We also have input on the budget. And I think that's about it. I think that's about it. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have a core curriculum too. We also approve the curriculum. And, okay, now your second part was...
What would you bring to the board if elected?
Well, I believe in helping every child to reach their potential, and I will fight for demanding and appealing curriculum for all students. And I think that's what I would like to bring.
So Sharon did a great job of delineating the role of the school board member, so sorry you had to go first on that one. So I won't go back over that. I do think there are some other, these parts that a school board member can play. To some extent, I feel like we can also be ambassadors to the community, and I feel like, you know, with a bit of consistently declining enrollment over the course of time, we need, and a large percentage of our community not actually attending, sending their kids to school in our community, you know, we need to do some work with the superintendent to get back out there, especially with young families, and encourage them to take another look at our school district. So hopefully I can play a role in that. I think there's also a role in working with the superintendent in engaging local leadership. And as part of my campaign, I've tried to meet with almost every local leader in the three different jurisdictions that we, that make up our school district. And, you know, across the board consistently, they say that how important, if not the most important factor, a local school district is in the community and in sort of rebuilding and strengthening the community. And I think they're all sort of primed to be engaged in working with us. Lots of them have great ideas. I know Mayor Edmonds has a couple of really good ideas that I think would be worth sitting down with her and see what we can do to put them into action. So hopefully I can bring that as well, engagement with local community leaders and getting involved in the district.
So Sharon said that, and I can really only add to the things that have been said, but as Sharon said, that the role of the school board is fairly prescribed. We do set policy, we take the budget, we hire and fire the superintendent, and then the impact that you can have is through the policy and then through what you direct the superintendent to do and how you evaluate how well the superintendent is doing that job. So things like community engagement, things like, you know, is there an engaging curriculum? What's the plan for making sure that students are at school, you know, because attendance is a big problem in our district? You know, there's all kinds of things that we direct, you know, how are we going to increase student achievement? What does that look like? What does the suspension and dropout rate look like? How does that break down by race? How's that break down by gender? So, you know, so you hire and fire, but you also direct through the job of the superintendent much of what happens in the district as a board of seven. And that's been a really interesting thing to learn about, is how to be one of seven. Nobody runs for the school district because they're a wilting daisy. That doesn't happen. People run because they have strong personalities and they want things done their way. And so to learn to work together as part of a board has been a journey, and I think that it's been really interesting to see how that all works out. As an elected body, works together to effect change in a district, sometimes it can be frustratingly slow, sometimes it can happen pretty fast. But you work through superintendent and through the policy and through the budget priorities that you have. And what I think I would bring is that I've been doing it for two years, so I've learned a lot, and again, I have educational experience, and I'm a good listener. So I think that those are things that I can offer.
Well, they've all pretty much described it, what the role is. Through proper evaluation of the superintendent, you are supposed to keep the superintendent on task. That's actually what you're supposed to do for all of your measurements, is the evaluation of the superintendent. Again, bringing, you know, what I bring to the board, 10 years of experience. A lot of people in the past have said how much they appreciate my openness and honestness as well as my dedication and commitment. When I was on the board, like I said, 10 years, I was absent from two meetings. And that was once because I was, had pneumonia, and another was on a field trip with the Science Club Field Trip Kids. I remain involved, I remain involved with those kids because it's important. So that will, that gives me a little bit more insight to what's going on in the schools by interacting with a handful of high school students.
All right. My next question would be, what can the school board do differently to make sure voters are informed about the school board or candidates? And we'll start off with Steve.
So the differently question kind of is a challenge, because it may seem like by saying we can do something differently, I'm critical of this board. I've actually been to a number of school board meetings and very impressed by this board and how open they are and how they're really having discussions in public about, you know, important decisions. I feel like sometimes on communication, maybe we've been a little behind the eight ball. And I don't know if the board is as responsible for that as, you know, like, I feel like maybe we were a little late in getting out the decision on to change the start times at school, and I think that had some people in confusion. Now, I don't know that the board was as responsible for that, but again, that's, you know, trying to get communicating earlier, I think would be a good thing. And I think the board already hands it already, so I don't think that, just because I say it, but I think they're already looking to do that, so. So I think that means, then, that they need to expect to get information and recommendations from the staff sooner, sooner in the process, so that, you know, and then make decisions and then get those communicated to the community quicker.
It's really difficult to communicate to the community, only because it's a large community with lots of different ways that you can get information to people, and it's hard to hit all of them, and I appreciate Steve's answer, because we are trying hard. In terms of candidates, I think it's on each of us as individual candidates to get our word out, but in terms of the board itself, I'll note that the media is here, and so we've been getting some media coverage on our meetings, which has been great. Yan Azaro, who's the district PR person, has been putting out emails with board meeting summaries from time to time. I have a Facebook page that I do board meeting summaries on and a certain amount of sharing of information about the district, but not everybody's on Facebook. The district has been doing some pace calls, which has been really great, about the different meetings. Not everybody wants to give up two, three hours on Monday nights, every Monday night to come sit for board meetings, but that's the best way, is to come to board meetings to find out the information. But we are doing the best we can, certainly, I think, as a board, to help people understand what we do. And I think that there are a few things, there's a question coming up, but I think some of the ideas for my explanation would be better placed in. But take a look around, because there are pieces of information out there, and there are a lot of board workshops. Board workshops are great, because we just talk, you know, the meetings are a little more formal. And so the district website is a good resource for people, but again, not everybody's on the web. So it's a matter of trying to get the material out in ways that people can really access easily, and that's, I'm not going to lie, that's a challenge, but we're trying.
Parental involvement has always been a problem with the two districts, even before they were combined. One of the things that we did back on the Well-1 Board was we actually sent out invitations to people to make sure that they knew that they were wanting to show up. And today, we're beginning to rely too much on putting it to a simple location and expecting people to find that location, finding out that information. Granted, Facebook is out there, and I have noticed that Dr. Edinson is posting a lot of things on there, as well as the individual schools. But when something needs to be sent out there, you really actually have to contact the people and make sure that they get the information. Don't just rely on them walking down the street and finding it. And there's a lot of stuff that is missed because we rely on people finding the information themselves. So, you know, actively engaging the audience would be a very good way of increasing the audience. Thank you.
Like trustee Schindler said, I can only piggyback off of her. It's up to the candidates to let you know they're running. The district responsibility is to let you know that the position is available. I'm quite sure the superintendent has asked, he will let you hold events in any building that's available. He will open it up to us if we ask. So we could have events at the schools or in any building. And it's just up to the candidates to let the district know that we're running and to get our literature out and to let everyone know that we are running for the board. So it's really up to the candidates.
My next question is, in your position as a board member, you will be in a unique position to be a powerful advocate for children from marginalized groups. What is a marginalized group, and how do you see yourself exercising that power?
That's just such an excellent question. To me, a marginalized group is a group that is not part of the dominant culture in society. And in America, that's white folks by and large. The dominant culture is white culture. So we have a number of students from marginalized groups. In fact, the majority of students in our district are African-American. When you look at the poverty levels in our groups, because poverty is another means of marginalization, we have a number of students, a huge number of students, whose families are living at or below the poverty level. We have a number of students who are Hispanic. We have a lot of students who are English language learners. All of these things can be barriers to accessing full, your full rights to education and to equality education. All of these things can mean that you grow up without the safety net, that people who come from backgrounds where there is a higher socioeconomic status, where there aren't so many barriers, where there isn't an unfair, an unbalanced level of incarceration. You know, we're aware that in society, black males and white males can do the same thing, and the black males go to prison for it, and the white males don't, more times than not. And that's a huge problem. And so schools are the first line of defense against that for students, and so we have to represent those students, and we have to represent them strongly, and we have to speak for them. And I don't come from a marginalized group. I was, I mean, other than being a woman. And so it's up to, I can speak for myself specifically, it's up to me to listen to what it's like to be part of those groups, to look at the data, and to look at how we can improve our policies at school and how the policies are followed, so that students get a fair shake at school, so that they get access to the education that they deserve, they get access to higher education. And as a school board, that comes from making sure that we're hiring a superintendent that's aware of these injustices in the world and has proactive approaches to handling them so that we don't contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline, so that we do contribute to our young people being productive members of society like they can be and like they already are. And we want to just keep that going. So I think a lot of it is recognition and understanding that my job is to listen and to do the best I can to represent.
Apparently, my interpretation of the word marginalized was different than what has come to be known today. Sorry about that. Marginalized, now that I understand that. Yes, we need to get all of our students involved. We need to, yeah, the chief... Gap, which, uh, the achievement gap was what was talked about the most, you know, about 10 years ago. And to close that achievement gap with the marginalized groups, we need to help them understand what their future is and how the education plays a role in that. And how being at school on time every day and passing good grades will assist in all of that. Um. That's, you know, that's something that has to be done. Thank you.
Here's a quote from Mother Teresa. It says, "Never worry about number. Help one person at a time and always start with the person nearest you." Unquote. We all have people or situations around us where we can step up to help others and to advocate on their behalf. For an individual who is facing a crisis situation or a challenge that seems too big to manage, having an advocate can be a lifeline of hope. Having an advocate means that you have someone in your corner who will speak up for you when you don't like, when you don't think your voice is being heard and see things in you about your potential that you may not see in yourself. Thank you.
So, my calling, my vocation is to advocate on behalf of marginalized. I've, I've committed, uh, my whole career to that. Um, and, um, it's.
Speak up a little, please.
Yeah, it's, it's a major reason why, um, um, I'm running for the IPSC school. So, um, I think there's sort of internal advocacy on behalf of kids and that, that comes up, I think, most prominently, you know, in the expulsion and, uh, suspension area. I feel like in some extent, culture has been overtaken by fear. And that's translated into the schools. And so as a consequence, um, you know, we want to make our schools safe. We're afraid that our schools aren't safe. And so as a result, if we see anybody as a threat to that safety, we kick them out. I, I don't get the sense that, that that's, um, the way we approach the Atlanta school state, so that this board could. I think expulsions are, um, almost nil and suspensions are down. So I feel like that's, that's a good thing. Because we know that an expulsion especially is the equivalent of the educational death sentence for kids. And so, um, I would, I never mentioned that specifically, so I guess I can put my comments on that. But I think advocacy also happens, um, by empowering students to be advocates for themselves. And I would challenge, uh, the teachers and the districts, district to do that as well. And I know one of the things that, um, a group of students at Michigan that I'm involved with does is called, um, Future Advocates in Training. And they come in and do mock trial and mock hearing with IPSC students in particular. But I think the other thing is an advocate on behalf of our district outside of our district. And I'm, my time is up. So I, I think I can help tell them that.
My next question is, how can a school get more money for classroom supplies, like textbooks, pencils, and pens? The special needs classrooms need supplies like chewies and figures.
All school districts have been experiencing this for a long time. Um, and, you know, parental involvement unfortunately is the way that most classrooms in most districts are handling that today. With the IPSC schools, most of our parents don't have the means that other districts like A and R versus Chelseas and the Dexters. And that's putting us at, at more of a setback. Um, kind of makes you wish we could actually get proper funding from the state and, you know, be able to buy the supplies. Um, but we've seen that that's not gonna happen. So, you know, we need to go back to fundraisers and things like that in order to, to get that and push the state. One issue right now, the charter schools get the same amount of money for their classrooms that traditional public schools get. Most of the charter schools, uh, academies are in the, the K through eight range and not the full K through 12. It costs more for a district to educate high school kids than it does kindergarten kids. And yet, the state gives those, just the charters, the same amount of money. Charter schools aren't faced with, with busing and they don't pay their teachers as much, yet they still get the same amount of money. We need to find out why the state is continuing to allow that to happen because that would be an excellent place to get money for the supplies that are so lacking in our classrooms.
How old are you?
I'm seventeen.
Okay, you're not old enough yet. You're not an eighteen-year-old, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, tell them to go out and vote. Tell everybody who knows eighteen, oh, go out and vote. Have them change. So we can change the laws. Go to your state rep. Go to your congress. Call, call your congress. Have them call the state rep. And have them change. Tell them we need funds for schools. Okay? That's the only way we're gonna get it, is make a noise. Okay?
Um, so, Washtenaw County, I think, is one of the wealthier counties in the state. There's a, a wealth of resources in this county. They're not situated on the east side of the county so much, although there are significant resources even on the east side of the county. And so, I would hope that we could, um, work with some local leaders that are involved, more involved on the, on the countywide basis and engage, you know, funding sources, you know, potential supporters, potential donors from, um, from throughout the, from throughout the county and bring some of those resources over here. I also feel like we don't have classroom, I mean, I feel like we do have money for classroom supplies, you know? And so, if there's classroom supplies that we need, um, then that's a, you know, something that's, some kind of break balance happening at the local, between a teacher or the principal or something that needs to get worked out. Because I feel like we've got, you know, priorities in the right spot. Yes, we don't have money. Yes, that's a huge problem. Yes, we can't compete with Ann Arbor because, you know, the, how much more funding that they get than us. But I don't think when it comes to supplies, that should, that should be a problem. But maybe my inexperience on the board is telling me that.
It is. It is.
It is.
Sorry. So, what Sharon said. Totally. Um, and then, you know, there's a theoretical answer and then there's a real answer. The theoretical answer is, um, you know, if we could budget differently, if we could make supplies a budget priority. The budget's online. It's ugly. Um, we're doing the best we can. Things are going, you know, things are, things are not dire, but we're, when we lose kids, we lose money. And when we lose money, you know, it can't happen forever. And we cut teachers and we cut supplies and we cut, you know, we cut things. Um. So you've probably seen donors choose and GoFundMe campaigns for classrooms. And it's sad, but it's the reality. So that's the, not the theoretical answer, unfortunately. So I would encourage you, and not all of you, um, well, everybody has the means to do something. Um, go in and volunteer. Find a classroom teacher and, you know, offer to give them fifty dollars for supplies. I don't know. I mean, it's not gonna sit well with everybody in the community because we all give a lot already. But a lot of school districts, um, much more wealthy than we do, have supply lists. Kids have to bring in expo markers and they have to bring in tissues and they have to bring in crayons. And our district doesn't because we want to give those things to kids. Because we want our kids to start with an even playing field. So while we're changing our government so that it will fund our schools properly, I encourage you to get directly involved and go fund the schools if you can. Go in and help. Give them some supplies. Drop off a box of tissues. Drop off some stuff. Um, because it's gonna take a community effort for a while here. We're doing the best we can with the budget and it is a priority. But, but help directly if you can.
My, um, next question would be, what is your vision of a positive school climate? And how would you like to see your district promote that vision?
My vision for a positive school climate. First, to have teachers have a clear sense of their own ethnic and cultural identities and how to work effectively with those to reflect identities that are different than their own. Have teachers communicate and demonstrate high expectations for the success of all students and a belief that all students can succeed. Teachers help students see learning tasks as meaningful. School provides an academically challenging curriculum. And how to promote that. Students who learn to work and play with classmates from various cultures are better prepared for the world they face now and in the future. Teaching and learning strategies that draw on an important historical contribution that shape our society and everyday lives of our students and their culture can only assist this learning process. Thank you.
And my vision for a positive, uh, school environment. Go visit, um, New International School. Go visit Erickson. Go visit middle school. Go visit high school. Those are, um, go visit Terry here. I mean, I've been to all those schools. I've been there during lunch hour. I've been there during school, you know, change and class changes. It seems like a pretty positive school environment. Um, and so I think there's certainly a perception that maybe, you know, it's not positive, but, um, but it seems pretty positive to me. So I, I would say, I mean, keep doing what we're doing and have some consistency. I think, I think you, the, the school environment is in large part set by the principal and by the teachers. And so, I think what we have to do is support, um, our principals and our teachers so that they'll stay in the district. Um, we keep the good ones here, um, and compensate them fairly and equitably and support them. And, um, that will have the biggest impact on, um, the school environment.
I think that I don't have a lot to add frankly, because those are all, all the answers are excellent. And, you know, I just think a positive school environment, a positive school climate is one in which every child is appreciated and celebrated for who they are, no matter who they are. And no matter what background they come from, no matter, um, of anything they, that they're celebrated. And I agree that, um, my children at least have, have had that experience in, in Ypsilanti. And the teachers here try really, really hard to make sure that that happens. And I think that by doing things like promoting the cultural proficiency curriculum that, um, that the, the district got on, got in place, um, I think that that's really helpful. I think that all the different things that, that teachers can do, continue to do to make sure that they have strong relationships with students because students come to school because of relationships and they stay in school because of relationships. Um, and also an engaging curriculum, something that students can feel like is going to serve them well in the outside world. And some of that is us explaining to them that algebra actually is used every day. I swear. Um, and it, you know, it isn't just abstract. Uh, but how to make that, that, that curriculum engaging so that students wanna be there and they help each other. Because at the end of the day, the adults can't be everywhere. So the kids have to help each other. The kids support each other. And that's, I think, when you've got a really, really positive school climate is when the kids are queuing each other and giving that support and that love. And, um, and so I think that that's, um, that's what, that's what I see, um, in an, in an ideal situation and often, very often in our schools.
I agree with everything that was said there, obviously. Um, the positive school climate is one where all the students are learning, although they're moving forward. They're not being disrupted by other classmates. You know, the teacher spending half the day correcting one student or dealing with the discipline of one student. They're actually stealing the education time from the rest of the class. So, you know, the positive school climate would, would have it where kids are not disturbing each other, where kids are learning. Uh, when, you know, as you pointed out, where the teachers stay. Um, the high turnover rate of teachers that we've had because of, of pay has to change. We've lost a lot of good teachers. That unfortunately affects the, the positive climate. The teachers don't feel satisfied. They don't feel comfortable, you know, then they're gonna leave. And they're not gonna put forth the effort into the students that they, that they should. So, there's a lot of things that all add up. You know, you, you can have ten or fifteen things go right. If just one thing goes wrong, it, it throws everything off the track. So, a lot of measures are for that, that, uh, positive climate. But mostly that the, the students are engaged and are learning. Thank you.
My next question is, school dropout is a problem with numerous social costs. What do you feel about your district should, could do differently to address school dropout?
So, um. I feel like, you know, obviously dropout happens, um, you know, at later stages in a school career. And, um, obviously, you know, and more likely to happen, you know, in the high school. And, but I feel like by the time the kids get to high school, um, you know, not that the die is cast, but certainly, you know, s- some of it has been cast. And so, um, I feel like to address dropout, which is, you know, not insignificant in IPSC, but not, um, not as hot as you might expect either. Um, I, I think we have to focus on, um, education at a, at the earliest possible stage that we can. And so, um, and, and so, and I like what things are happening at homes. Um, I think that's a good thing. I like this new, um, international, uh, elementary school that they're starting as well. But, um, I feel like as a district, if we wanted to sort of direct our attention, because we've, we've been paying a lot of attention to programming at the high school and at the middle school level and that kind of thing. And I feel like we've got a lot of good options in place there. You know, if I could turn our attention, it would be towards, um, you know, if, if we needed to, uh, the, the elementary schools of the younger age. And that's, I feel like where you address, um, the dropout problem.
So just to piggyback off the whole early education thing, which is crucial and research supports it. And I think probably because you're here and you know this already, but you know, that the study that found that was done here in this building in the sixties by Highscope. And that started head start and that has impacted And that started Head Start and that has impacted millions of children nationwide for a long time. So we have a lot to be proud of. And, the research, okay, so here's the thing. So, education research is, is not always as robust as it could be. The sample sizes tend to be small, there's a lot of variation. However, smaller communities certainly have helped and the district is, is, has put those into place at the high school level. Ninth grade academies can help and there is a special ninth grade cohort grouping, special attention being paid at the high school. Busing helps and although I know that the busing is not perfect, we have it. And I'll tell you, that comes up, because when we're looking at cutting costs, it's an option for districts to cut busing and it's not, I'm not saying you should all be grateful, but, but some districts do cut busing because it's a, it's a huge expense. But, it's an expense that's worth it, because our kids have a hard time getting to school. And, and so that at least is a way to help improve attendance for our students. I mean, we have a lot of families that don't have cars. So there's, so there's a lot of things that the district is doing to prove that career and tactical education can really hit a lot of kiddos that really aren't engaged by a traditional curriculum. You know, they really don't like to sit and listen to lectures and they really, they really would prefer to get up and learn how to build a house or learn how to fix a car. And that's gonna keep them in school. And unfortunately, the Michigan Legislature with the Michigan merit curriculum limited the ability of high schools to do that, but that's kind of coming back. And I think that that's something that we need to keep building on, which we are doing in the district right now.
Definitely early childhood education, parental involvement. Being involved with the robotics teams, I have seen the, the stats that USfirst.org puts out there regarding student involvement and that they say that almost, almost, almost hundred percent of the kids that are involved with the robotics program for the full four years graduate from high school. I have seen many students that came in through the robotics program in ninth grade that you were certain were gonna drop out, but through their active involvement with the robotics, they stayed on and have done very well, including one girl who ended up being our valedictorian last year. She walked in there in ninth grade, she was having a lot of problems and she specifically credits the robot program, which is part of the STEM Academy. The STEM Academy gets the students actively involved with the learning process instead of just reading books. Combine that with their ability to be part of the robotics team, they end up, you know, with the hands-on experience from all of that. But mostly, we also have to, you know, go back to early childhood. One of the things that was talked about before the mergers occurred was preschool for all of our students. I thought I heard noises that we were gonna try and build that into part of the district without charge to the parents. I know that that part hasn't happened, but we gotta get preschool in there, get the parents to come in and get involved and stay involved. And get them to stay involved all the way through. A lot of parents show up for the elementary field trips. You don't see parents at the middle school or high school field trips. Parental involvement helps keep kids in school.
Can I, can I just say, we have preschool. It's through Head Start and GSRT, but we do have preschool, it's free in the district.
For everybody?
There is a waiting list.
Well, then it's not as large as...
No. If that's an I S T, I think that yes. But we do have it.
We have to start getting proactive in our approach. We have to start looking at, at student attendance, their test scores, their grades, their behavior, their participation at school, their family participation at their school. And not like what Mr. Gray said in their later years, in their early years. Start looking at this. If that family dynamics is not education wise, most likely that child mindset would not be in education. So, what we have to do is get to that child at an early stage and recognize these behaviors and get prevention activities in, something that will give them support so their attendance will increase. Something, programs for parent involvement. Intervention for their academics in case their grades are bad. We can get like parent tutoring for them. But something to help that child to not fall through cracks. Okay? Because it starts at an early age. And then, in Johnny's house, if their mother is saying, "Well, you have to stop working today's sibling at the age of sixteen to help support this family," most likely Johnny at the age of sixteen is gonna have to stop going to school and start working to help support that family. So, we have to break that trend and we have to get to them at an early age. So, you know, I'm just saying, we have to come up with some kind of activities, some kind of programs to help our families in this district. And realize that all students who drop out are not lost forever though, because sometimes you have to recognize, school is not for everyone. And sometimes a kid who has dropped out at sixteen, that environment is not for them. So maybe they need something else like online courts or night school or what else they have? Somebody help, GED program. You know, they're not fit, I don't wanna say fit, they're not able to be in a classroom setting, you know, because of something that's going on in their life. So we have to help them in other ways and get other programs for them. So, being a dropping, dropout is not a lost cause for that child. So we have to help that child also. So, I'm just saying.
Onto my next question. The state of Michigan just enforced a law that retain, to retain third graders who are not at grade level, uh, reading, reading at grade level. Sixty percent of YCS third graders were not proficient on the 2016 M-Step. How should YCS respond slash prepare for the mass retention?
Is it my, is it my? Sorry. That's a really good question. Again, there's theoretical answer and a, and a, you know, what do we do right now? Answer. And the theoretical answer is that the whole concept of grades is a little integrated and really, this should be based on skills and we should be able to identify the skill level that each child is at regardless of their age, because all children follow their own developmental path. So what we should be looking at is the skill level, not what grade they're in. But unfortunately, the way that the curriculum is set up and, and there are certain aspects of school funding that are tied to how the curriculum gets set up, you kind of have to do this by grade. And that's really not so, not so good. So the real answer is we have to move resources around so that we can put more teachers, more reading aids into the early grades. There's a further answer, which is that the tests probably need to be changed, because there's a whole thing about African-American students, which is again, the majority of our students, and, and not testing well. And it has nothing to do with intelligence, it has everything to do with the words that are used, how they're used, and how that relates to the home. If you have a bunch of people who were raised in, in upper-middle-class white homes writing tests for kids who are raised in homes of immigrants and homes of African-American students who, who are, who are simply using different vocabulary or using the vocabulary differently or learning more orally, you're gonna have lower levels. So we need to change the testing, we need to change how we're looking at kids. But that said, we can't just give up on kids and say, "Well, they're, you know, they, we don't have a good test for them," because kids have to be able to read. So we will, as a district, need to shift resources to make sure that our students, however they're tested, are, are, are proficient earlier.
That's the first that I've heard of this issue. It was a specific issue. The, the, the students do need to be tested, that's correct. But as pointed out, the kids that have never seen a dolphin before, you know, when they go to the ocean, they, they are, they're afraid of, you know, they're used to the Miami dolphins. So that gets back to, you know, what you learn at home and what you're exposed to. The, they've proven that kids learn at different rates. Kids should be measured on progress and from where they started the school year and not just where they are, you know, advanced by comparison to other kids. We know the tests that the state uses are drawn on bell curves. They're designed to have failure in them. And because they're designed to have failure, getting them rewritten so that all the kids understand them is probably not going to happen. And, you know, getting back to parental involvement, you know, keeping parents involved, helping their kids read, learning the importance of reading, all of that adds up to, to what's required for the kids to do better.
I agree with trusty Shunhar and... I knew your name. I did.
I agree, names also don't, so feel free.
I agree with what they say. I also have to say, we have to go to the parents. We have to help them. Because sometimes the parents are not well-educated. And if they're not well-educated, they can't help their children. So, with that being said, it'll be hard for the kids to take the test and understand tests when they're not getting support from home. And teachers, the teachers we have, some of them really don't know how to educate African-American kids. So, we have to also train the teachers on educating, educating our kids too. So, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
So when I heard about this, I just got very angry. I mean, can you imagine at that stage in your education career being held back? I understand the thought behind it, but you're punishing the victim here with this. So, and to think that we need some motivation in our district to teach our kids to read, it's just... So, my inclination would be, talk to legal counsel and ignore the law, if it, if it comes to pass. I mean, because I, I'd like to see them come after us for that. But, so, but, I think, you know, we have to do better at helping our kids read and meet the tests that they have to do. I agree with that. And, you know, I think we already should be putting as much, you know, maybe even a little, you know, front-loading our resources towards, you know, elementary education as well. So I think, you know, but I don't, I don't need somebody to threaten, you know, it's like holding a kid over the balcony and saying, "I'm gonna drop him if you don't do better here." And it's just, I'm sure, but, okay.
Onto my next question. What is the current climate at YC schools for LGBTQ students? What policies slash support is in place or needs to be in place for these students?
And I have absolutely no idea of what's going on currently with the school district regarding that. I know that, again, relating to being the robotics kids, we do, we did have one student in there that was transgendered and the students were all talked to about that person and, and, you know, told to respect that student's rights as they stand. That's really all that I know that's going on in the district at the moment.
As a board member, we are working on rules or regulations. We have a reading, a re-reading of our rules or regulations. So we are in the process of working on that now. Thank you.
So, I was visiting with the principal at the high school today and that topic came up and he told the story about a transgendered student who had a significant other, the transgender student from Wy High that had a significant other at, at the, at the Ypsilanti High School. And that she had related to him that, that, you know, that the, the environment was so supportive at Wy High that she would, you know, think it would be more of a challenge at YPSY High School. And he related that he told her that, you know, that he understands that and that it's maybe a little more sheltered environment at the, at Wy High, but that, that they were prepared to, to make sure that this student that was there, significant other would have a, you know, be, be prepared to deal with, you know, whatever challenges they faced unless they got out of high school. And that maybe the, the high school would be a better environment, YPSY High School would be a better environment for that. I'm not sure how I feel about that, but I certainly would be vigilant. We wanna make sure that we have policies in place that a student would be able to, you know, feel comfortable, feel supported, feel safe, no matter what their, their background.
Part of cultural competency is understanding where students on the LGBTQ spectrum, understanding the issues that they face and supporting them through those issues. Students who are part of the LGBTQ community and questioning their gender identity, their sexuality are at risk for depression, suicidal ideation, all kinds of things, because it's a really tough thing to go through. Even in a community that, you know, has a university and, and prides itself on tolerance and diversity. So, so we as a district need to make sure that we're actively supporting those students. And I understand anecdotally from members of the area LGBT community that we're not doing as good of a job as we could be at all. We have yet to adopt formally the school board, the state school board's transgender policy that they passed, and I would like to do that. And I am interested in getting policies passed that specifically protect the rights of our LGBTQ students. We have a long way to go as a district with that. It's a priority of mine, and one of seven, and it's not, I'll be real honest, it's not something that's come up a lot at the board table. And I think that that's kind of a partially reflection of, you know, we had budgets to balance and so forth. And also, though, a reflection of the historical reticence of the district to address the LGBTQ concerns of our, the concerns of our LGBTQ students and teachers. And so I want to make sure that that is something that is addressed much more proactively in the near future.
What do you believe are the root causes affecting the school district? And how do you see the board addressing these issues?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What do you believe are the root causes affecting the school district? And how do you see the board addressing these issues?
Our budget is the root cause. The second is this. Boy. We are working on our budget. Hopefully, we're having a workshop in about two weeks, I believe. And we will know where we stand with the budget. And hopefully, things will turn around. We sold a building, this district sold a building. We closed on artists. I think that was yesterday? We closed on artists. So that was income. And we are renting a building to, in our district. So that would be income coming into the district. Now, the thing is to figure out what we can do with that income and which way we can do it best.
So I feel like one of the root causes that has the most impact on our district's school of choice, I don't necessarily think charter schools are as significant as, you know, pitting public schools against each other. So, you know, we can't compete with 17,000 students and the budget that Ann Arbor has. And as a result, a school of choice, it seems to have pulled on some of the worst tendencies in our community and our society and, you know, caused us to kind of segregate ourselves. I don't have an idea about what a school board member, other than, you know, to get to do what Sharon recommended, which is to vote and get a change in Lansing, to deal with school of choice. Because it used to be that, you know, you would fight to make sure that the district that you kids were going to school in would be good enough for what you considered your kid to get, the education they think they need. And now, it's just a matter of belief. So that's a root cause, and I don't think we can do much about it. But what I think we can do about, we can focus on, is giving the best education to the kids that we have here. And I think the key to that, and I said this before, is teachers and principals. And I feel like as part of the merger, to some extent, we lost some good teachers, and we're in the process of replacing them. But we can't do much, it's hard to keep teachers at the salary that we're at. And so, at the salary that they're at. And so, I know that there's a lot of talk about you can't get blood out of return, but there's not much you can do with the budget. The only place that I can see is the buildings. You know, for our size, we can't, you know, have nine, 10 buildings. And so that may be a place where we can make some made-roads on the budget and be able to compensate and keep our teachers and principals.
My older son started kindergarten in this building in the year 2000. When he went to chapel the next year, there were exploratories, and the teachers got to do really cool stuff that they were really interested in. With all the kids, they would get little groups of kids, and they could do all kinds of neat projects. And then No Child Left Behind hit, and we started to feel the impact of the school funding situation. And every year, more and more got cut. And as I had kids go through, my older son skated out on the, he surfed the wave of change and closures, but my younger son got hit with it hard, and our youngest daughter got really hit with it hard. And it took a toll on the children. Right now, the amount of money coming into our classrooms for the children, the amount of money actually hitting the classroom is the same as it was in 1995 because of all kinds of other commitments that districts have to keep to their former employees and so forth. But school of choice is a problem, charter schools are a problem. Under the aegis of public schooling, we're allowed to have schools in our community that have a particular ideology and attract children because of a particular ideology, sometimes religious. Those aren't public schools, but that's happening, and that's a problem. So if you have students go to public schools, public schools have to take everybody, they have to educate everybody. That is a beautiful thing. But No Child Left Behind started this wave of problems where it actually penalized the poorest school districts for not making adequate progress. And things have just really become difficult from there. And then, you know, America has bought into the myth that public schools are failing their children, and they're not. So we have to buy back into public schools, and we have to vote.
Well, everything that they said is true. The issues are really a plate of spaghetti. It's not just one single thing that has gone wrong. It's not just one single thing that can be corrected. The state of Michigan right now currently has about 550 school districts in it. There's 1.7 million students roughly in the state of Michigan. The county of Los Angeles has 0.7 million kids in one district. We have 550 districts. With the state funding the way that it is, and I said this about six years ago, it appears that the state is deliberately underfunding school districts for the purpose of forcing consolidation. And as long as we are faced with the underfunding, we get roughly $7,000 per student, Ann Arbor and six or seven other districts get $10,000 per student, there's one district that gives $13,000. There's private schools in the area that claim it costs them $20,000 to educate kids. You know, when you start looking at those numbers, you look at where we're at, you know, yeah, it's a plate of spaghetti. It's not one thing that's gone wrong, and it's gonna be a lot of little things that have to be fixed to get us back where we need to be. Funding, funding with lack of funding, we're running into resource issues, we're running into students not graduating. When we don't graduate, it makes the numbers for the district look bad when that happens. They run off to neighboring districts, they run to Ann Arbor, they run to charter schools. When that happens, you lose funding. You know, a lot of things out there. Unfortunately, my own grandchildren currently have gone to the Ann Arbor district in part because of the time.
Onto the next question. As a school board member, you may be asked to make decisions about a non-mandatory student expulsion and long-term suspension. What would be your guiding principles in making those difficult decisions? Are there situations you would absolutely expel? Are there situations you would not expel?
So I think I mentioned this earlier. I consider an expulsion to be the equivalent of the education, definitely. And I, because when you look at kids that get expelled, they can't get into other districts, and there are just a lot of, are a lot of options for them. So, you know, I have to take each decision, each case as it came, but my guiding principle would be, no, I'm not giving up on, we've gotta have an option for this kid. And, so, that would be, that'd be my principle, you know. There, you know, nine times out of 10, there are lots of factors that are impacting this student's life that have nothing to do with him that are outside of her control. And so, I just think, you know, I'm ready to take on the spirit of fear in our community, which I feel like is what drives, you know, expulsion rates.
Suspensions are a problem. Students get suspended for things, and they're out of school for 10 days, they're out of school for longer. And these are the students that can generally not really afford to be out of school. However, sometimes they're really making it very difficult for other students to be in school. And so, giving teachers and administrators more resources to deal with this, to develop a positive discipline plan, which the district just adopted, although I understand that teachers don't have to do it. And so that's, on the implementation of that, what we'll be watching with the board. But, but the idea of creating a, discipline isn't really about punishment. It's just a kind of a myth that society's pushed on us. Discipline is about providing a structure for success for children and support. And so, ideally, you never get to the punishment stage. And, you know, I'm a teacher. I, you know, I had kids in my office yesterday, but, you know, it happens. But you keep them, you help kids be mindful about what's happening, and then you get them back into the classroom as much as possible. There is restorative justice in the schools being used, and that's a great way to problem-solve. It's more after the fact, but it can build up into some proactive problem-solving solutions for students. In terms of expulsions, I mean, the law's pretty clear about some things that we have to expel for. And those are things like bringing a weapon to school with the intent to hurt someone. And, and sometimes that's, you know, that happens, and students, you know, are expelled, and that happens. And in that case, yes, I would expel a student. However, most of the time, that's not what's going on. And in the case of non-mandatory expulsions, generally speaking, I'm not in favor of, you know, of expelling a student for something that we don't absolutely have to expel a student for. And the district's adopted an approach to try to avoid that non-mandatory stuff even coming before the board. It still does sometimes, but, but we want to try to keep kids in school.
I actually began my involvement with Willa Run District back in the mid-'90s when they adopted zero tolerance, because that's what was being pushed then. There were students that were expelled for weapons, which is, you know, yeah, you need to keep that out of school, you need to keep that activity out. There was also a neighboring district where an elementary kid had brought a knife to school for the purpose of cutting browns. And rather than the parent actually cutting the browns up, you know, into 30 pieces, send along the knife to make it easier to teach her, because she didn't know how many students were in the class that day, they actually expelled a student for that. Fortunately, that wasn't one of our districts. And, you know, there are circumstances, as you mentioned, with the intent to harm, that wasn't a previous stipulation, just the weapon there was reason enough. There are indeed are reasons to expel. There's also very compelling reasons not to expel. And as far as the suspensions go, need to cut back on that. Back in the day, they used to do detention, where you'd bring a student in for after-school detention or weekend detention, and actually assist them in getting caught up on their work instead of just sending them home for 10 days and hoping that they were able to get caught up. So, yeah, there are some things that need to be in place.
Okay, the school board will always uphold the law and make decisions, grounding what is best for the students in our school. In the school district's rules and procedures for suspending or expelling a student, it's always outlined in the student handbook and is adopted by the local board there. And that's written in stone. But as a school board member, I am committed to exploring alternatives to harsh disciplinary action and making sure students receive the necessary support they need in order to be successful in school. But you have to remember, though, Michigan is one of the states that has zero tolerance. So you have to keep that in mind. Now, you ask me, what would I expel a student for? Okay. If that student is found guilty of a dangerous weapon or criminal sexual assault or something like great bodily harm or making a bomb or a bomb threat, yes, by law, I would have to expel that student. But if he can, or she can convince me in a manner that they was, they didn't know they was gonna use the weapon to do great bodily harm, or they didn't know the weapon was in their bookbag or whatever, that I probably would not expel the student.
Nationally, there is a disturbing trend of suspending preschool and early elementary school students. And some communities are embracing such suspensions. What is your position on suspensions in early grades?
I know some preschool and kindergarten teachers, and they are sometimes at their wit's end, and they've argued with me that they need to be able to suspend their young children from time to time. And I respectfully disagree. I don't think that we should ever be suspending children in the early years. I think it sends just the wrong message to our children. And when you look at the differential in how discipline is applied, which does not say anything about any teacher at all, specifically in this district, but just across the country, we know that the clearest way, the easiest way to show a child that they're a criminal is to treat them like a criminal. And if you start treating them like a criminal when they're that young, I don't know what you think you're gonna get, you know? And that said, teachers are strapped for resources, they're strapped for support, and I know that. So we need, again, an overall discipline plan, we need to have the kind of support, but I do not think we should be suspending children who are very young.
And I would definitely agree that we should not be suspending children at that age. But they have to learn, you know, they have to be disciplined somehow, get the parent in there. Get the parent in there, have parents sit and help the teacher control the student who's misbehaving. In absence of a parent, get, you know, another guardian, a grandparent or something or someone. But definitely suspending at an early age is detrimental.
You know, children learn to act appropriately through their interactions with their parents, their teachers, and their peers. But not every child develops the social, emotional skills that help them control their So, and not every child has to benefit from early education in a single-home situation either. So preschool and early elementary schools should use discipline as teaching tools instead of as punishment. Suspending students are more likely to struggle academically and drop out of school because too often, they are the same students who need the most support from school. And missing multiple days will not help them at all. So, I'm saying, okay, say if there was a, two students in the cafeteria and they hollered, "Food fight." So they're going to start throwing food. Will you suspend those kids because they're throwing food? Why not, instead of suspend them, punish them and make them clean up the mess they made? They would learn better from that than kicking them out of school. I would think. But like I said, I don't have a career or a childhood. I'm just a mother of four.
I agree with all these. No way should we be suspending elementary school kids. I got to figure though that at the point that a teacher and a principal feel like that's a good idea, that they're probably at their wits' end. And we need to rally around them to help them figure out a way to keep a kid in school. But there's no way we should be suspending elementary kids.
What role, if any, do you feel law enforcement should have in schools?
Well, at first, when I was involved with Willa Run, Willa Run did have a liaison officer from the county. One of the things I learned through his presence is that he wasn't just a liaison for the district, he was actually a liaison for the students. There were a lot of students that would go and talk with Detective Boyden as a personal confidant. They had gone in and, you know, discussed other issues that were going on in their With the presence of an officer, perhaps students would be less likely to run afort and do some of the bad things, bringing weapons to school because they know there's an officer Mixed emotions on it, you know? The district ends up having to pay the county or the municipality for that officer to be there. So there's resources that are being consumed that could be used other places. All in all, I would actually favor it just because of, you know, the students and their ability to communicate with that officer and the control that I think that his or her presence can add to it. When I was in Ann Arbor here, there was a liaison officer there the entire time as well. So I don't find it detrimental.
Okay. I went to that other district's school. And in high school, we had a, I guess she was a liaison person too, because I don't think she was an officer-officer. And she was there to make sure we go to school while I'm out of class, I'm sorry. She was there in case we was in the bathroom trying to smoke them funny smelling cigarettes, you know? But I didn't do that. She was also there to break up fights. So that's what we needed, her there. Now, a law enforcement, we don't need a police officer planted in the school. That gives your school a bad look to me. And I think we only need police officers there on an as-needed basis. And that's for them responding to emergency calls, talking to the superintendent, creating a plan for like a bomb scare, you know, the emergency evacuation plans they need. And for maybe security events, like the football team when we play against that other district. Because I know in my days, we got a little rowdy there, but that wasn't my time. We're not like that anymore, right?
Yeah, I think this, I guess first of all, I'd like to see how the students felt about it. I mean, if the majority of students feel good about it, then I wouldn't want to go against that. My initial impression is it's, again, kind of playing into that whole fear culture and to have a, you know, a police vehicle sitting out in front of the building seems like a censor on message. But like I said, I think a big impact on that is the officer that you have there as well. My wife used to work as a student advocate at the Student Advocacy Center, and she had lots of experience with, you know, liaison officers in the schools escalating a situation that really didn't need to be escalated. It turned into a crime when it would have just been a school discipline problem at the time. So that's my bet on it. It's, you know, if the students feel like it's a good thing and you've got a good officer there that understands that how you police in a school is not the same way you police on the street, then I can see it. But, you know, again, my initial inclination is censor on message.
I don't know what it's like to go to school with a police officer in the building. I can imagine. It does not seem to bother my own children very much, but I don't think it's a good idea. The district does have police officers at the high school and at the middle school, and we are evaluating. I know that Superintendent Edmondson has approached that with sort of wariness. I've seen no data to suggest that the presence of an officer in a school improves school climate and culture. I think that it does the opposite most likely. I think that as a society, we're very eager to criminalize our children. And I think that it's an outgrowth of that, that we have police officers in school who, you know, again, it can be, I mean, if it's an individual that's committed to developing relationships with children, we need not the individuals committed to developing relationships with children that we can in our world. But to have a police officer with TASER, I think armed, in the schools, it just, it doesn't sit right with me. So, that's where I'm at.
This will most likely be our last question. Why shouldn't we consolidate with other schools in the community?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Why shouldn't we consolidate with other schools in the community?
Why shouldn't we? Well, it's a good question. Um, I don't know. I mean, there's a strong argument that we should. However, Ypsilanti has a history all its own, and it's a long and it's a proud history. And I think it was wise to have consolidated with Willa Run because it was kind of silly to have three districts in one small town. And I think it would be wise to consider a further consolidation. I'm not trying to make any radical, like, statement of purpose here, but, you know, we could look at consolidating with Lincoln potentially. But I don't know that we're ever going to wind up in Michigan with this kind of county-wide school districts that infer, you know, like they have in California. And I would want to keep the character of Ypsilanti, the particular things that make Ypsilanti special as a function, as a guiding principle in the Ypsilanti district. And that would mean that we wouldn't consolidate hugely. I do think that there can be economies of scale, and I talked about that the first time I ran, and I've found since that we're using some of them. The ISD, which is the countywide kind of overseeing district that coordinates things, does help us implement some things on an economy of scale. And I think that we can continue to look at more of that, where we can save money by working as a unit. But local control is essential, and I think that we need to keep it in Ypsilanti.
And as I alluded to earlier with the county-level consolidations, I don't believe that consolidating down that type would be a good thing for any of the districts. I do think that the state is going to continue to squeeze the budget until they have forced some consolidations. As I mentioned earlier, when you look at 550 districts in the state of Michigan, if you throw a number of a million dollars apiece for administration expenses onto each of those districts, the state thinks that they can save a half a billion dollars a year by forcing consolidation. A half a billion dollars. That's a lot of money. Unfortunately, if we were to consolidate that load, you know, the state, instead of putting the money into the classrooms like it should, would just simply cut it from the budget and use it for other things. If the state could, you know, promise us that we'd actually see, you know, if Washington consolidated down, you know, there's another $10 million a year just for the county and the classrooms. I would see that happening. So consolidating with Lincoln, yeah, I could see how that can be beneficial. You look around the county, you see that, you know, how many districts have already tried to consolidate with Ann Arbor, and Ann Arbor won't take them. Consolidating with Lincoln, sure, that would work, but I don't think anything else would.
Okay. YCS, we are one big, beautiful, captivating, and spectacular family. I don't think we need to consolidate with anyone else. We need to embrace this district and watch it grow. Watch it become dynamic and see what we can do to just soar. We've got what we need here. We have our community, our businesses, we got our students. We need to bring more students in, but we have our students here. Let's watch them grow. Watch them become spectacular. I don't think we need to consolidate with anybody else right now. Let's get this consolidation with Willa Run together first and move on.
I mean, I can see the sort of surface lure of consolidation, especially with a district like Ann Arbor, right? Because when our 4,000 students get absorbed into their 17,000, all of a sudden, our achievement problems almost disappear, right? Nothing's changed, right? Our kids aren't educating better, our kids aren't testing better necessarily, but just because of the numbers and the connection with already a high-performing school district, our achievement numbers disappear. But if our goal is only to make our achievement numbers disappear, then that's not a good reason to consolidate. Saving money, the purpose of saving money would be that we could have enough money to pay for supplies that apparently we don't have enough money for, or to pay teachers better, right? And so that was the theory when we were looking at consolidation with Willa Run. And I'm not sure if all of that was realized as a result of that. So if we're looking at Lincoln, I certainly want to make sure that whatever lessons we learned from our consolidation with Willa Run were applied to that. But if we're looking at Ann Arbor or a county-wide consolidation, then we lose our voice, right? We lose control to some extent. We will not have a majority on the Ann Arbor or county-wide school board so that we can guarantee that our kids are looked after, taken care of, and got the best education that they need to. So, and I'd like to see how Ann Arbor is doing at educating in their achievement gap, right? Are they doing significantly better? Have they figured out how to do that? Because if not, then what's, you know, then what's the point? So I'm not ruling it out as a possibility, but certainly there'd be some concerns that we need to be addressed.
Okay. I would like to inform everyone that the questions that were asked today came directly from the community. They do not reflect on the views of DTMAC's organization. DTMAC will post all of the questions on their website. If anyone is curious to, what the questions were or further the questions we had for anyone to answer, they will be posted on Dedicated to Making Changes' website. Here we have someone to do our closing, and his name is Jimmy Wilson. Everybody, even round of applause.
And first, I just want to say, I'm not going to take up too much of your time, a little time is wainging a little bit here, but I want to say first, Dedicated to Making a Change's organization led by Gail, let's give them a hand for putting this on. As you see, we have four great candidates here, and so we're probably going to have some decisions to make. I probably don't have to tell this group to get out and vote, because if you're here looking at the school boards, you're probably going to be voting. I probably don't have to tell you to turn that ballot over to the nonpartisan section, but I encourage you to get absentee ballot. Lions are probably going to be longer this election round. Get absentee ballot. Take your time making your choices. Encourage your friends and family to turn that ballot over. We get the school board here. One of the main pieces in my platform over the summer is I ran for Ypsilanti Township trustee, was our youth. Getting more active with our youth. And as you heard, a lot of questions, it's going to take a village. We've heard that before. It's going to take a village, it's going to take community activists, it's going to take state representatives over there, county commissioners, township officials, elected officials to get more active in our youth, school boards be more active, and even the students that are here today, creating positive environment, everyone together. So I'm just going to finish with saying thank you, four candidates for coming out. You all seem very knowledgeable, so thank you for coming out. Let's give them a hand. All right, I guess we're all finished here, so thank you for coming out.
How's it going?